Time now seven P M. Welcome to the Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty five, City of Manistee Planning Commission. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Membertu?
Here.
Commissioner McBride is absent.
Yeah.
Commissioner Scarface is absent, and Chair Whitlow?
Yes, we're here. Approval agenda at this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the July third, twenty twenty five agenda, which should be the tenth.
The tenth.
Oh, tenth.
Do we need a motion or anything on that?
Making a motion with the amendment.
Amendment on that, on the date?
I think just got the old copy. It had been updated.
Okay.
Okay. I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who made that motion? Thank you.
Any questions, discussion? No, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you. Conflict of interest, is there any member of the commission with any type of conflict on tonight's agenda? Nothing, okay. Approval of minutes at this time, the planning commission can approve the June twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Shall we second?
I'll say.
Roger, discussion? None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence, correspondence has been shared with planning commission and will not be read aloud. First off, presentation speaker, Mr. Mark Sandstedt. Surely.
Nope, you have to face the other way, Mark.
(laughing). It's nice to see you. Happy to have you here this evening. Nice to see you.
It's nice to meet you.
Marky.
I already hugged you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I appreciate the opportunity. Teresa had invited me a while back just to kind of come in, let you know what's happening with this project, because this has been something that's kind of been lingering out there for a while, and it has a whole new purpose and direction, and I wanted to share that with you, because the city master plan is kind of imperative to all of this coming together. We've been through that process with the master plan committee, primarily to establish the location at the original planned location of the kite flying area. So that, that's what's been recommended to the master plan. So that's basically our, you know, our first, you know, deliverable, I guess. Where is it going to be? It's going to be down at the kite flying area. A lot of benefits to that, primarily, it's a big open area, doesn't disturb anything else. We looked at maybe one of the softball fields, or maybe trying to tuck it in over by the Lions Pavilion, and the biggest thing in, and I think the biggest objection we would get is view corridors. If you ride around the loop the next time, that area is literally the only area at First Street Beach you can't see Lake Michigan, because there's trees and dunes. So conceivably, this venue could be tucked in that area with very little disturbance to kind of what's already there. The other big part of it is that we know that the city wants a bathroom down in that area somewhere, and ideally, a bathroom, public bathroom facility could be a part of this facility, whatever it is. I'm not here to talk dollars or anything like that. So how this got started, if you remember, thirteen years ago, Salt City Rock and Blues held a reunion concert. They raised a lot of money. They didn't know what to do. They donated it to have the light, help the lighthouse get painted, and they're like, well, jeez, it was easy to raise X dollars, let's do it again. And that's kind of grown into LaborFest. And along the way, you've all seen the renderings for the seven million dollar facility, and it looks beautiful, but there's just no way we could ever sustain that type of facility for the beach. It'd be beautiful to have, but how are we going to pay for it? How are we going to maintain it? And it really just kind of stalled. And so, doesn't diminish the effort and the desire and the need for that type of venue in our community. It just, it isn't going to happen this way, because it was almost like they were on step seven before they were on step one. This is step one, getting the city behind the plan. It's going to be a city asset. Any grant money that comes in is going to be administered through the city, so if we're not simpatico, we might as well just call it a day. So that's why I'm here, and I just want to make sure that you all, as decision makers, are informed on exactly what is happening. So what has happened is we have formed a new nonprofit called the Manistee Community Amphitheater Foundation. Salt City Rock and Blues provided all of the startup money for us to be incorporated at the state. We have subsequently obtained our five oh one C three status. We have a local donor that is, we have ten thousand dollars in our bank account. We've already secured that, and discussions for a much larger investment down the road in terms of a matching grant. We've gone through the process with the planning, or the master plan committee, and I had talked to Mick about this. What we're looking at doing is creating a weekend. It would either be the second or third weekend in July, and we would make it the Manistee Rock and Blues Weekend. And Friday night, our group will bring back the famous Manistee Fish Boil as a sustaining event to this event down the road. So every, every year, second or third weekend in July, we are going to put this event on. Friday night will be the Fish Boil. Saturday night will be another array, and it's a whole nother reason to bring people to Manistee and keep people here, and as importantly, a fundraising mechanism to help sustain and maintain the venue in the future. We're working on a logo and a brand and a website, but we really are kind of selling the location right now, not the venue. We don't know what that venue is going to be. There has to be a lot more discovery and working together and collaboration to figure out what this, what's it going to cost, what's it going to look like, what's the actual venue going to, going to, you know, how does that take shape? We know that we want a venue that's going to serve the whole community. We want a venue that's going to have multiple uses and really be something that we can all be proud of. So we formed a new board. As you can see, our president is Ryan Biller, our band director for Manistee Public Schools, vice presidents Bob Ogilvy from Salt City Rock and Blues. We wouldn't be here without their group's efforts. Noah Cameron, well known for the Forest Trail Music Festival and Roots on the River, is our treasurer. I'm the secretary, and then our trustees are Steve Grocock, Tim Scully, Tom Volcomo, Tony Jabuda, Laura Ortiz, John Beech from the Parks Commission, and Bryce Cameron. So it's really important for us to be transparent and know, you know, what we're working on, so you folks know what, what our objectives are. And that's to develop the venue, work collaboratively to build consensus for the project, pursue all grants, again, working with city staff and local, state, federal, nothing would be off the table, and be the catalyst. The analogy I've made is the city is driving the bus, and we're going to put the gas in it. So really, there's not a lot of detail right now by design, because we want to let this process play out. Realistically, we're probably talking the three to five year timeframe. This isn't something we're going to pull together in the next six months. We're going to do it right. That's why we've been very quiet about the fundraising. I, I can't ask for a donation if I don't know what that donation is going to go for. I can get support for people that believe in the project, but when it comes down to the nitty gritty, we've got to have a plan that, that can, that is bona fide. And one of our desires is to raise money beyond what it takes to build the physical asset, to have an endowment to be able to help manage this. Once you get the ball rolling, it's easy to keep it rolling, and once you stop it, it's hard to get it going again. So I think we can learn a lot from the Ramsdale. I think they could have raised a little more money when they had the ball rolling twenty years ago, and we wouldn't be trying to figure out how to make that beautiful venue work. So I think we can learn from that, and we just welcome your input and feedback, because this is going to happen. We just have to do it the right way. So that's all I got.
Any questions?
I'll ask one. So the location you chose of on First Street Beach, now that's a confirmation?
That's what's recommended in the master plan. It's not, it's not been confirmed. The master plan, it's going through the approval, the five year city master plan recommends that as a location, independent of our group. We went through that process to answer questions and express what our objectives are, but we are working at the direction of the city master plan, and that's the location that is in the city master plan.
I have a question. Who have you been working with on the master plan?
Well, Bill Gamble, Sean at Spicer Group, the committee, we, we had a meeting. I don't know, this is-
What committee? Because we do the master plan.
Well, it was, it was, we were invited to, for our input at, at a part of the planning process. So that's, that's why I'm here, is to just, you know, I want to be transparent and available to answer your questions.
So, since I've worked with Salt City Rock and Blues, I, I understand fully the benefits of having that amphitheater. What a lot of people don't realize is that in order to put on an event at that park right now, more than half of the dollars goes into stage lighting.
There is inadequate power. A huge expense is getting adequate power. To bring a big band in, they have to bring generators in. And so we've already talked to consumers about that and know what that process takes to get. That's one of the first obstacles is getting adequate power down there.
And, and so, but even, even staging is anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And again, imagine when you're trying to raise money, if, if your expenses are over fifty percent.
Yep.
Impact.
And you have one day to make it back.
Exactly. So I, and I also, you know, it was interesting. I've, I've heard a lot of different locations being talked about, especially the corner, the far corner, close to the Stubbier.
Mm-hmm.
As a location. And it had some possibilities as well.
Mm-hmm.
But the, that was, the kite park was the first, with the idea of being able to use that sand dune as kind of a natural amphitheater, and having the view of the lighthouse, both lighthouses actually as a backdrop for the stage. So, and the master plan basically agreed that that was a good location. I'm hoping that the bathrooms will be placed somewhere between the Lions Pavilion and that stage, and that was also a discussion.
Correct.
That the Lions Pavilion then can have a better venue.
All of that's on the table. We want to start with a clean slate, and if that bathroom facility can advance the city's cause and help this project have more value.
Yep.
Then let's do it.
So, and, and again, I think you've got some really great people on that committee that, you know, the Camerons built a beautiful stage and did it by themselves.
They're living it.
And, and it was, you know, again, would be, even that stage would be a, a big ten plus over what we currently have, which is zero. So even if we start small and, and grow.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the positive way to approach, so. I think, I think you're, you've got a great start, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Mark, would, I know this is way down the road, but I know West Shore Bank has always wanted to come to Manistee. You, you know, have Rhythm and Dunes coming here, which would be nice, huge for us, rather than driving to Luddington.
The reason there's two Rhythm and Dune concerts in Luddington is because they couldn't find anywhere in Manistee to stage it. They attempted to pull it off at the Manistee Catholic Sabre Stadium, and they couldn't come to terms. And so they kind of hit a dead end, and that's why it's two weekends in Luddington.
Nice.
So pretty confident we could probably get one of those back this way if they had a venue. They'd like to be here.
I would love it.
So, and a, you know, a facility like Luddington has is something to kind of take a look at, because you've got a stage, bathroom, it's all incorporated into one, you know, one structure. And that's what we have to look at, is how can we leverage everybody's desires into a facility that we can all sit back and go, wow, what a, what a cool deal this is, you know?
Well, I hope it goes. I mean-
Oh, it will. We just have to, we just have to be patient, and we have to, we have to do things properly, and we have to do things that the cities will, because it's going to be their asset. And we understand the, the responsibility of maintaining that asset, too. Can't just build it and let it sit there. It's got to be taken care of.
Yep.
And I think we're, we're trying to include that into our thought process on all this. So-
Any other questions? Shall we add anything?
Nope.
All right. Thank you all. My number and email are on the bottom if you have any questions. I'm happy to represent our group. We've, we've, you know, to Mick's point, we've got a great group of, it really represents the community nice, and it's a, it's a good crowd to be in, included in, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mark.
You, Marco?
Yes, sir.
In that respect, would it behoove us to have somebody on that committee from the planning commission? Like the lady said, we're the ones that make the master plan up.
No, possible. And we have, we have somebody. Hank?
Have to have somebody.
Kind of second hand, but.
Aren't you involved in it anymore?
Yeah, with Salt City Rock and Blues I am, so yes.
There you go.
I'm on that committee.
Oh, okay.
And Bob is representing Salt City Rock and Blues. And Steve also represents the Ramsdale Theater. So it really is kind of representative of the whole community, as far as the music community is concerned.
Excellent.
Are they ignoring the feasibility study that was done?
No, they're using, I think they're using, I was going to bring that up, but we do have a feasibility study. And it basically said, you know, hey, you know, the four or seven million dollars, whatever, is just not feasible. That's, and again, it, that whole process kind of had legs of its own and got pushed way into the, into the mega.
The strata.
And now we got to bring it back to the reality.
Reality, yep. Next, we have T. The Gateway Project?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
We all want to hear about this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
E F Taxiaris with Little River Holdings. I want to give you an update on the status of the project. It's been almost two years since the P U D for the project was approved. Time flies. This is a large project. It's a very complex project, and it's taken time to put all of the pieces together. So... Okay, oh, down.
Down.
I pulled a few slides from the, actually, P U D, area, aerial view of the project with the north complex, that's the condominium hotel complex, and then on the south side of River Street is two, are two mixed-use buildings with a parking structure above the townhouses and between the buildings with the solar system, whoops, being on top of the, of the parking, the parking deck. Side views of, this is the south complex, with the townhouses, eight townhouses along River Street, the parking deck above and between the buildings, the east mixed-use building, that's a four-story building, and so is the west building, four-story buildings, and that's primarily apartments and condos. The north complex is the condo hotel. That is a five-story building, and that's what triggered the need for a P U D, because in order to create enough rooms for the hotel, we needed to go an extra floor, and also to accommodate the conference center, the restaurants, and all of the other facilities. Again, this is from the, from the P U D package that you've seen before, at least those of you that were here before. So, over the last two years, we made some changes to, to the makeup of the various components of the two complexes, and I have identified with a yellow highlight the items where there have been changes from what was presented in the application for the P U D. All of the changes are within what is allowed by the P U D, and so there is no reason for any amendments to that, to that permit. On the south side, between the east and west four-story buildings, we have thirty-two apartments. Those are studios, few studios, primarily one-bedroom apartments and some two-bedroom apartments. That's, I will show you in the next slide, there is a reduction from the number of apartments we anticipated earlier. The work-life units, the townhouses, there is no change there, still eight of them. The condominiums have increased. We essentially converted some of the apartments and office space into condos. The commercial and retail and office space has been reduced by converting the office space on the fourth floor of the east, get back there, of the east building here into, we converted that into condos. The parking deck has, we have increased the capacity by, from two hundred and fifteen spaces to hundred and nineteen. Everything else, streetscape, stormwater structures, rooftops, solar panels, remain the same. The current construction cost, which has increased in the last two years as a result of a number of factors, interest rates, some tariffs on some of the material, labor availability. So the cost, the construction cost for the south complex is about thirty-seven million, plus minus half a million. There is substantial remediation that will be required on, before we start construction of the building, in the form of removal of contaminated soils and installation of vapor mitigation system around, below all of the living spaces. So the, below the slab foundations for the townhouses and the two buildings, we have to put membranes to capture organic vapors, and then we have to exhaust them and treat them up in the roof of the buildings. So we have about a million in remediation for the south side, which we're looking at starting some of this work still this fall. The north complex, it's phase two, is the condo hotel complex. The reason that, one of the reasons that we're doing this in two phases, we're going to start with construction of the south complex, because that includes the parking deck. And the parking deck, the availability of parking spaces is a P U D requirement for the hotel, for the conference center, and for the condos. In addition to that, for staging, for construction staging, we will start with staging, constructing the south side and staging on the north empty lot. And then, once the construction of the parking deck on the south side is about, almost completed, we can use the interior of the, of the parking deck staging for supplies primarily, for the construction of the condo hotel that will require also cranes. So we have been working with the city on how we're going to accommodate that and how to minimize impact on traffic on, on River Street. So on the condo hotel complex, we have ninety-seven studios and one-bedroom units. That's an increase of about seven units since two years ago. The boutique hotel operation will be on the first floor. The restaurant, and actually, I should put the restaurant in yellow, because we changed the location. Nothing has changed in terms of the actual components of the complex, just the location. The Heritage Center is going to be located in the west wing of the building. The restaurant now is going to be located on the, on the southeast corner of the building. The conference center has moved from the lower level to the first floor, to the main floor, and there will be riverwalk and street improvements that will remain the same. The construction is about forty-five million. So the entire project right now is at about ninety-one million. And this will also require substantial remediation. We have to excavate a lot of soils that will have to go to the landfill, and then both under the building and on the sides of the building, there will be vapor mitigation membranes. Again, vapors will be captured and exhausted and treated at the roof of the condo hotel. There are, I want to go over a little more detail on changes that, since the time that we submitted the application, again, there is no changes in the exterior, any of the buildings, in the footprint, the location of the buildings. The apartments, the apartment units on the south complex on the first phase have decreased from forty-seven to thirty-five. Be converted, the apartments, ten apartments on the west building, on the fourth floor of the west building, into condos. And those are various sizes, studio size, one-bedroom, and there is a couple, two bedrooms. The commercial space has been reduced, and the reduction is due to the conversion of this space on the fourth floor that was going to be office. It was, originally was going to be office here, and then two small studios. We converted those into condos, into six condos, so that increased the condo count. So the net residential unit, apartments and condos, has increased by four. We increased the number of condos by sixteen, and of course, that has an impact on the required parking spaces. We did increase the parking spaces by four from the original plan. So the phase one of the project requires, by code, twenty-four parking spaces. Again, we have two hundred and nineteen, and you will see in the next slide, the, the condo hotel complex requires hundred and fifty parking spaces. So between the two buildings, hundred and fifty, and- Parking spaces, so between the two buildings, hundred-and-fifty and twenty-four, hundred-and-seventy-four, hundred-and-seventy-five. We still have another forty spaces that will be available for the public. The entire public, the entire parking structure will be public. So the tenants, the condo owners, the hotel. Will access the parking spaces on an as-needed basis. So because, again, by code, we have to provide, the condo has to provide spaces, one per each room. And so, again, altogether, we have hundred-and-seventy-four, hundred-and-seventy-five parking spaces to provide. And. One more. So there's some renderings of the, some plans of the condo hotel building to see the changes. So starting with the lower level, right here. So this is below, one level below River Street. However, the north side is going to be at the level of the riverwalk. So we have the, the conference space initially was down here. We added some residential units here, some condos. This space for the time being is, will be empty. I'm pretty sure they will find uses for that. Then on the first floor, which is River Street level, we move the restaurant from. Need to go which way, this way, no. Yep. We move the restaurant from the north corner to the south for visibility purposes. And then we move the conference space, which increased in size to accommodate hundred-and-sixty people instead of hundred-and-fifty. Again, that requires some additional parking spaces. And then on the upper level. That would be the fifth floor. The pool was relocated from the basement, it used to be down here. It moved up on the fifth floor. We added some studios on the east side. And then enlarged the, the outdoor, the bar and also created a outdoor space for events over here. So the three. The three additional units here, the five units there are the, the added, the increase in the condo units. So the P U D was approved at the end of August. And we're going to request, talk with Jerry a little bit about it in extension. The construction, the latest. Schedule we have from the engineers is that the first phase will be fourteen to eighteen months duration. And the second phase, eighteen to twenty-four months. We anticipate a nine-to-twelve month overlap. So assuming that we start with the south complex at the end of the year, beginning of next year. Then at the end of, of twenty-six, we'll be starting with the north complex. We are already in the process of, we have engaged. Additional consultants for the design of the condo hotel. And they're already working on details, on the branding, what it's going to look like, interior. So I anticipate that we'll be ready to start the condo hotel at the end of twenty-twenty-six. So the request for the extension is, you know, everybody has been saying when we're going to start. Well. Project requires about ninety million in financing. And so we had to make some design changes that I just discussed. Again, all interior primarily conversions from apartments to condos. Because the banks require to see more upfront cash. So we're going to have to pre-sell. There are also delays in the financing. Because one, the cost, construction costs have increased, interest rates have not gone down. The Mexican Economic Development Corporation has. Changed the amounts and types of funding they were planning to provide in the form of grant and loans. To less than half of what was discussed earlier on. And, and finally, there is some, a bit of delay, a few months in, in approval of the TIF plan. By the M E D C and Eagle. As you probably know, the city council approved the brownfield plan in the last week. I think it was last week or the week before. And so the next step is for the city's brownfield consultant to generate a, a work plan. That goes to the state for approval of the capture of the school tax, the school TIF. Because the D D A approved the capture of the locotif, those are the local incremental taxes. However, the state has to approve the capture of the state taxes, you know, the eighteen and six mils. Because they are going to reimburse the schools for the lost tax revenue. So we expect the TIF approval by the state by October, maybe November. So that's. The latest. We will provide Jerry and for the commission, a request for extension of the P U D permit. In the next few days.
Any questions?
Available to answer any questions except one.
What would that be?
We are trying really hard to, to get started. We want this more than anybody else. And however, the financing is very complex. There, there is no one financial institution that will finance the entire project. So we're working with at least two, three banks. Again, this project is not funded at all by the tribe. And therefore, the banks have requirements that over the last year. Have resulted in the need to make a number of changes, the major of which is converting apartments into condos. And because of the need for higher percentage of equity.
So they were working this week on the south side where the parking garage is?
Yeah, we had, this week, let's see, yeah. This week, they, they were removing the, and plugging the monitoring wells that were there. Because we need to have those removed and, and pl, and abandoned properly. Per Eagle requirements before we can start any excavation. We also had the surveyors, I believe, again, this week or last week. Did some additional surveying of the south property line. So we have selected a contractor, a local contractor. To do the removal of the contaminated soils and also the, all of the foundations that are there. And the, some of the trees that are on the property. So the surveyors were there to, I just got the plans like this morning. So that we know how much soil has to be removed at different portions of the site. The site, as you probably know, is made up of four tax parcels. And so the old dry cleaners, the house, I forget the name of the gentleman that owned the small house next to it. Then the Cadillac plumbing is the biggest one. And actually Cadillac plumbing property had an underground storage tank that was leaking. So we've been working with a different part of Eagle. To have them fund the removal of contaminated soils associated with the leaking underground storage tank. And then the property to the west, where the auto detail shop was, it's the fourth parcel. So the funding, there is some funding available through Eagle right now to do some of the remediation. Not to excavate soils, but to dispose the soil, the contaminated soils to a landfill. However, the different parcels are funded by different pots of money from Eagle. So we have to separate and we have to track what leaves each of those parcels to go to the landfill. So that's something that we're preparing to do right now.
Has the underground tank been taken out of the Cadillac?
Yes, yeah, that was taken out some time ago, like four years, five years ago. However, there are some contaminated soils that remain contaminated with hydrocarbons, you know, fuel components. And so while we're going to be removing two to six feet of contaminated soils from the surface. There are additional contaminated soils further down, deeper, that associated with a leaking US, underground storage tank. And those have to be treated separately.
And you're going, you said you're going to take the trees from the hill, is that what you're going to do, or it's going to be done?
Yes, not all of them, the ones that are on the property because the footprint. Let me think here, where we're going to go with this. Yeah, the. Hope I don't put the laser in your eyes, Roger. Down here. This, this is the hill with all of the trees. Well, the buildings are going within about three feet from the. From the property line.
Didn't you say last time the fire needed access or? Didn't you say, when you were talking about that property line last time, that fire or EMS needed access back there?
That was one of the items that the fire department brought up. And as part of the special permit, that requirement was removed. Now what we've done however, even though there is no requirement for the fire equipment to get there. Down here. The building is going to, on the first floor, there will be an opening. So that they get with equipment, not with trucks, but with equipment to get around if they need to. And it also provides additional access for the tenants and for the, the tenants or owners of the commercial spaces. But so right here then is going to be pretty much vertical wall, retained wall. We're working with the owner of the property to the south, about right there. Get access to, so that the building is not so close to that wall, to the property line. And therefore it can have windows, but also that's the area where we're looking for. Trash dumpsters. So we've been working with Republic on their requirements for access for a dumpster or two. Because it's going to be a lot of people there.
Any other questions? On the, on the hotel.
Yeah.
It's actually going to be five floors above, above River Street and then one below, correct?
Yes.
So a six-story structure, counting the downside.
The down, yeah.
Will there be public access to the riverwalk anywhere through that property?
Yeah, yeah, the, there is a riverwalk, I mean sidewalk that will go from River Street from down here. Down into the riverwalk and to the outdoor, there will be a bar, outdoor bar there. Now, we had discussions with D O T about, because D O T owns this property here, all the way there. And the soils here are contaminated and they have a stormwater. Pretty good-sized stormwater line. So they're hesitant to accommodate any use of any of that. Of that property there. We would like to do something there to connect, we have some green space, but they don't want, they don't want us to touch it.
Do you have an idea when you're going to start pre-sales on the, on the condos on the south side?
Right now. We have, the architects are currently developing models for the various condos. I expect in the next few months.
And then they will, that, that'll generate some of the working capital that you're looking for, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And actually, there will also be one of the, one of the units that would be like here, I believe. It's going to be furnished and, you know, have, be ready for people to walk in and see. In addition to looking at renderings.
So have model available?
Model, yeah.
But you'll be selling before the model, correct? But you'll be selling before the model, correct? You'll, you'll be offering, uh?
Uh, yes, um, I, nobody asked me that yet. Uh, we, we were planning to do that, now how quickly? I expect to get, uh, some renderings from the architects in the next two and a half months.
It's hard to have a furnished model though without a building, right?
Pardon?
I said, hard to have a furnished model without a building.
Well, that would be towards the end of the construction because also this model will be also used to pre-sell condos on the condo hotel complex. On the condo hotel complex, Little River Holdings will maintain ownership of at least 50% of all of the units. And, um, will make available for sale the remaining forty-something over here for three to five years. They are not gonna be pre-sold all upfront.
I, I think we talked about this when you presented a year or so ago, long it's been, about the docks. You gonna have, uh, transient docks or anything?
Not yet, we don't have any plans. I mean, we have not drawn any plans yet. Uh, we have not sta- even started the process of, uh, going through, uh, Eagle and, um, and Corps of Engineers. It's, uh, it's gonna be limited number, uh, we can only get six in there. Because the property line cuts across like that.
Yep.
And then over here, as you know, it's a bunch of rocks, so. We will be doing that, um, again, that's one of the, I guess, lower priorities in the, you know, in proper, in planning.
Shelley, have any?
No.
Roger?
No, no, it sounds like they got their hands full.
A little bit, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need? Yeah, yeah.
Public hearings, we have none. Public comment on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting. Limit of five minutes, uh, to address the planning commission. So is there any public comment on the agenda tonight?
And?
None, okay. Along. New business, none. We'll write, go to old business amendment.
Hey, Mark?
We did.
You got new business. Did you guys get the updated agenda?
I was just going up mine, I'm sorry. Okay, yes. Date and time change issue.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Reading my... Okay, since we've changed, uh, to accommodate Teresa, um, moving the, uh, our meeting to the second Thursday, um, Nick and I met with the city manager and talked about moving our meetings back to the original first Thursday. Is that, is that all right?
I guess.
Okay?
And then also the time?
Yeah, we'll talk about, well, on a temporary, so we have a new planner. Jerry is temp planner right now. So, uh, moving the meetings to, um, five?
So there's a conflict with your first Thursday?
Okay.
Um, the first Thursday meeting is the?
NRBC.
NRBC meeting at?
Four.
Four o'clock.
Okay.
So... I don't know how the?
So I thought we were talking about 5:30 as the meeting time. Moving it to 5:30?
Where did the five or 5:30 come into? What was that about?
Well, to accommodate, uh, the temporary planner because that would prevent him from having to hang around for an hour and a half.
Oh, yeah, I understood.
For a meeting because he has a long ride.
Oh, okay.
So that was the, the idea, trying to ma- make it as?
I'll be honest, Roger, I'm, I don't wanna come to late meetings.
What's that?
I don't wanna come to late meetings, I got a family and.
Oh, I don't blame you.
So. I agreed to do the interim thing if you wanted to move the meetings, uh, earlier in the day.
Oh.
As early as possible.
Well, the Brownfield, we meet at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, hey, you can go to noon, I'd be happy with that, I'll skip my lunch.
I mean, what the hell?
Totally up to you guys, um.
But I think 5:30 works, right, for, it works for the four o'clock meeting?
I honestly don't know how long their meetings are, Mick.
Yeah, that's true.
You could have a conflict and people standing around waiting.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I haven't, I haven't been to one of those meetings, so I, I don't know.
You know, last month was about an hour and five minutes. Today's was thirty minutes, so, just depends what's on the agenda.
You never know.
Yeah, that's true, you never know.
So, okay, so that is at four o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we, if we did move it to five thirty, that, in theory, gives a little?
Little buffer.
Push.
Or a half, yeah. Yep.
And again, this will be temporary until we have a new planner in place. So, at that time then we'll have to change if we wanna change our times again, so.
Well, if you're the new planner, we wanna change until seven, if you're meeting at five.
Never know.
Well, like you said, you never.
Let's see, yeah, go ahead.
But I'll, I'll make the motion, if, uh, if that's appropriate, that we change to the first Thursday of the month at 5:30.
Starting in August?
Starting our next meeting, yes.
Yes.
Hey, that's okay with, that's okay with you, sure? 5:30?
Yeah, if I don't like it, I'll just cancel your meeting.
Yeah, if you don't make it, can't make it, I mean, yeah, okay. Fair enough.
Give us five minutes, would you please?
Yeah, I will.
We have a, a motion by Mick to move it to the first, back to the first Thursday and change this meeting time to 5:30 temporarily.
Second.
And Shelley, second that, any discussion on this? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Motion approved.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now we'll get to old business amendment, 550 First Street, parcel number 51-340-701-03, and 546 First Street, uh, parcel number 51-340-701-01. Street or alley vacation request. So we, we had this last month, we tabled?
Mm-hmm.
We did table it.
Jerry, you wanna move on anything on this?
Let me pull it up here real quick. Teresa created a memo for you based on some discussion that, uh, I believe the planning commission and the, um, city manager and herself, um, had about the request. Um, the survey that was resubmitted appears to be maybe a little bit, uh, more property than was understood. So I believe the memo here from the community development office, um, stated that, uh, what would be maybe appropriate to send to city council would be a starting point of the driveway heading due west across both parcels with the potential of some sort of license or agreement for parcel one, I'll call it, on a corner, to use that driveway and that access. Be honest with you, I haven't been involved with the whole process, so that's the memo you have in front of you. I think that was the understanding that everybody had. It's not the request they made, but, of course you know, this has to go to city council. Your recommendation could get approved or rejected there, so. If you wanna take action, you could with some conditional, um, drawings being submitted, or you could make that a, you know, request if that's what you desire, or you could take action on this or approve or deny what you have in front of you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what is the planning commission's thoughts on that?
Well, again, I, I think for, for the, the good of property owners and the city, I think having the, the driveway become deeded as a shared driveway, which we have precedence for in the city of Manistee, would then serve both purposes. It, it's not, like I said, it's not, no longer would be considered city property that the driveway is on. It would be considered to be shared use. And then also extending that line from that driveway across that lot would give, uh, the parcel on 550, uh, over ten feet of space from their porch to the backyard. So there's a potential gain. And then the city still has a, a drive that can be accessed so that property then could be resold or repurposed as a park or whatever they wanna use it for, uh, with access. And I think that, you know, again, it may not be, but this way, it's, it's kind of the best, easy way to resolve the issues that exist now, and it doesn't have any real cost associated with it. If you're looking at, you know, vacating property, there may be a, you know, again, a cost that would have to be assumed and sales that would have to be transacted, but I think this would be a fair way to mitigate both issues on both property owners.
Yeah, it does, it does clear up, uh, 550 First Street, um, to get the deck onto their own property.
Onto their property, and then give them a little backyard, not, not, you know, eighty or ninety feet. Yeah, so, but it still gives them a backyard, so there's a win-win for everyone, I believe.
Well, if you don't mind my asking?
Okay.
What are we even thinking about this if we don't have a problem with it? I mean, if the people are still dealing with it and happily get along with it, why do we even deal with it? Let's just deny it and let it go as it is?
Because it's, they're, they're basically, uh, using city property.
Correct.
Without?
But it's been there forever. That's how it was when they bought the house.
Yep. Well, I don't, well, the, the driveway is fairly new.
All right, I don't understand, yeah, if it's not broke, why fix it?
Well, that's what I, that's exactly what we're doing, is we're, we're, we're not breaking it. We're, we're fixing it, but we're fixing it legally so that they basically now are deeded to the land that they're currently occupying.
So there'd be no easements or concern for the city over the land that they're gonna have?
Well, it, it hasn't gone to city council yet, but I think they would be, I'm, I'm guessing that city council would be, uh, easy to approve this versus taking away its, so much of that parcel that it no longer has any viable, um?
Value.
Value. It, it won't be big enough or a space. If they, if they give up much more than what's already there, now you lose the value, and that's probably a sixty, fifty thousand dollar parcel that we're talking about.
Honestly, I don't think, uh?
But it was, it was there, see, that's what I mean, it was, we're not creating anything.
I, I understand, but the city has owned it, it's just the same thing, uh, you know, again, I can, I can park in the parking lot, but it doesn't make the parking lot mine.
Correct. I don't see, I don't see why we're even messing with it. If they're using it as their advantage.
Well, we're, we're addressing it because it was brought to us.
Yes, but we can deny or accept, and I, I say, why deny, why accept it? Let's deny it and leave it as is. I mean, they're, they're asking for it, the homeowners are asking for it.
I, I get it, but if we deny it, then potentially the city could then come back and say, you have to remove your porch and you have to remove your driveway because it's on city property.
But it's?
But what I'm saying is that, that is within the city's right to be able to do that, and we don't want that to happen, that would be unfair to the homeowners.
Yes, that would be unfair.
So that's why we're just trying to make it right for both parties.
Make it easier for, make it easier for both parties.
All right.
So then, the decades of maintenance by the homeowners, um, and any potential city trying to recoup past tax revenue, that kind of thing, that just goes away, right?
Yeah, I, that's, that would be my assumption.
That, is that would be?
And, and again, no lawyer here, so I couldn't tell you, but I would think that that would be a fair and reasonable way of compensation.
I would just hate to see some recourse on these.
Right, if, if any recourse was gonna be, uh, had, I believe it would have come up with a, with all our paperwork. So. Could be mistaken, but.
We can only propose it, right? City council's gonna?
Right, it's city council, but, um, but I think this is, it, it.
Are you talking about just going like just straight across or your?
Correct, just going straight, straight across, and that would be?
The south part of it, not the north?
Let me, let me just.
The north part of the driveway.
I think the concept was that this would basically be the new property line, you just square it right off, and then this driveway would be public access. In other words, it would remain, um, as a shared driveway so that if this lot sold or was developed, they would have access to the lot, both lots.
Yeah, but I thought that they said, I mean, they, they need like thirty feet from that wall, so just for easement, right? So you're talking such a small piece of property at that point.
Their property line starts right there.
Yeah, it does, but.
So we were giving them this, we would give them this much more property.
Correct.
They would have that much more property going straight across, plus this would be, they would still be able to use this driveway for access into their garage.
Right, but I thought the city said they needed like thirty feet from that wall, so if the?
No.
You're talking from like here to here.
That, from, you know, we're talking about from that, that van hole cover's here.
Okay.
So that would give us more than thirty feet.
That's the city.
It would be on the city-owned property.
Not counting.
Not, not counting.
At, at the, at the end.
Great.
Each property owner would gain property.
Oh, yeah.
And they would remain, they would, they would retain the use of the current driveway. And hopefully without any, any difficulties from the city, it would be my recommendation.
So any further discussion on this? How does everybody feel? We can make a motion and it can be approved or denied.
I think if that's the most likely compromise.
Yes, I know, we can do is propose it, city's gotta approve it anyway.
Right.
Because technically the driveway is, it's a platted road.
Yes.
It's, and it didn't used to be paved.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Maybe the shared access could be the best way to go for? Probably not, the homeowners probably aren't gonna be happy with that, but.
Yeah.
It might be.
Well, and it may be, depending on what's developed, it may not have to continue to be shared. But we just don't know, again, related to a pretty cloudy crystal ball, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing, based on the proposal, what the potential lot size left would be, and then what could even be developed on there, ba- based on the size and?
It could very well just stay green space, the way it's been, since they get rid of all the factories that were there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So here's your most current survey that was proposed, that shows the sanitary easement through there. So probably not a lot is going to be built structure-wise over top of that sanitary sewer, but you had the potential for a park or a whatever.
That's what I mean, yeah. If there's easements, you build, build something, give it to them, they build something, then what are you going to do if you got to get to it?
Well, yeah, the proposal is right on the edge of the easement, going back that far, which...
Oh, yeah. But theoretically, if, if these two parcels were sold collectively, the structure could be built in this piece.
Oh, yeah.
So you, there is plenty, there's plenty of space, so the structure could be this way.
Yes.
Facing, and you would have basically a full house and a full lot, you know, be able to contend with.
And we want to have any conditions on, future motion on this? I, the only thing I have is if 546 Lemmons are parking their vehicles on city property, any type of leakage, you know, is there a condition under that?
I think they're both there now, so...
Yeah, both are. But auto, oil, grease, things like that.
I'd, I'd kind of leave that up to the city to kind of make that determination, that wouldn't, to me, whether or not any, if there's any continuous use after, after the, the city makes their decision on the property...
You let it go to council.
I, I would let them.
Okay.
Yeah, and it may be that they have no problems with it being used until they figure out what they're going to do with it.
Okay, all right.
So maybe the only, the only condition is that at least part of that driveway that's there remain.
I, I would say the whole, the whole driveway should be a shared, would, would be deemed as a shared between the city and, and the homeowner for, for, forever, basically.
Then we're going to have what we had with the characters on what, 3rd Street with a shared driveway? Somebody owned the driveway and somebody else didn't want to use the driveway?
Right, well, that's why it would be, it's basically going to be, you know, a share, a true shared driveway that basically the...
Well, this will be doc, this will be documented, the whole issue on 3rd, or on 5th Street, you know, there's stories running back and forth, there's no documentation.
Yeah, that's true. But I mean, you get new owners, and they don't feel the same as the last owners about sharing the driveway, then you got an argument about, you know...
Well, that'll be in the deed.
Only he said it's a platted road, so then would it become...
It would be deeded as, as a shared, a shared access.
Okay. We're all in. We're good with this? Mick, you want to make a motion?
So I'll make that motion, that, that the property line basically goes straight from that driveway line.
From this point?
From, yep, from...
That's the original property line, and then straight across?
Well, actually, although I would give them, can we go back to the picture one?
Give them some, 10 feet or so?
That would get, that would get a little bit of, a little bit more property. So here's, here's the property line, so they would have that much more. I would cut straight across those two parcels, going from, changing it from an angle to a pie, going straight across. That gives this property owner a piece of backyard, and it gives this owner all the way up to where the shared driveway would turn into their yard. And then the shared, this would be shared space.
For the second option, yeah.
For whatever the city determines. So that's my motion.
There you go. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It makes the most sense.
Motion by Mick, second by Pam. Any discussion? Please take a roll.
So just so I can be clear, that you're proposing that the property line be moved, giving that extra land to the property owners, and then the driveway...
Would be shared.
Shared, okay.
Deeded access.
Deeded access. Deeded, okay. Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
No.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner member two?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, move along to the master plan, Chapter 6, existing and future land use.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you all?
Good.
It's been a little while, Tanya here again. So just to clarify, the gentleman earlier, he was talking, I believe, about the beach master plan. I have not talked with him at all.
Ah.
I could say perhaps Teresa may have, but it truly sounded to me like it was related not to the master plan that the city is working on with Williams and Burke. So I just wanted to clarify, because some of you were like, oh, you know, some of you seem to know, and some of you were like, I don't know. I'm up here to just let you know, I have not spoken with that gentleman in any capacity, so I am pretty darn sure it is not this, this master plan, and it's the beach master plan. With Spicer, so...
It is the beach master plan.
Okay, just wanted to clear that up. Okay, so, I am here today to take any comments, questions, I also can facilitate an overview of this chapter. This chapter is both the existing land use, which really just is like a snapshot in time of where the current land use is of all the parcels of the city, but most importantly, it's about the future land use, and it has the map as well as the narratives. I will say, before Teresa left, I did ask her to see if someone on city staff could do a little bit of quality control, quality check on if the existing land use that we had provided was correct. I never got any response back from her, so I'm going, so one, if you see something that's incorrect on the existing land use plan, please let me know. Also, I was going to communicate with Jerry and Tracy about that as that as well. I should back up, and also say, last week, or two weeks ago, we had a virtual meeting to talk about kind of how things are moving forward with this project. I'm going to be working closely with Tracy, but also with Jerry, because obviously he's the city employee. My understanding is with Housing North, they're also going to be supporting, but really providing a lot of support when it comes to the master plan on the city side, so be working with both of them, but my sense is I'll be working mostly with Tracy, especially because there's a lot of important process stuff that if we don't get it right later, it can, even though the plan would be good, it can get you guys in legal trouble, blah, blah, blah. So I will be working closely with her. I'm used to working with communities as much or as little as needed through that process part, and I'm here to help see this all the way through. Nothing should change from my perspective in terms of, you know, kind of in the interim, whatever happens with the planning position that's open, et cetera. So I'm here to help see this through to completion, and keep it moving, so, if I can help it. So I wanted to provide that background. So, and then one more thing about the future land use material subject matter, a lot, generally speaking, has not changed. The current plan that you guys have, the future land use map looks primarily the same. There are some adjustments we provided in the draft, just based on our understanding and community input, as well as just kind of what's usually in more master plans versus zoning ordinance. There seemed to be a little bit more zoning stuff in the master plans, we kind of took some of that out. So with that, I'm happy to take any comments or questions, or provide a more thorough overview per your suggestion or request.
So, the only question I had that popped out was, why is the golf course considered medium-density residential?
So my under, my, my sense was maybe, so golf courses are, it could totally be recreational. Over time, there are fewer golf courses, so would it be in 20 years, so a plan, a plan horizon, the lifespan of a plan is 20 years. In 20 years from now, would it still be a golf course? If you guys think yes, change it back to recreation, no problem. If not, if it's kind of depending on how things are going, might that be better, better suited for that type of residential land use? But if you're like, no, this is a mainstay of the community, then it absolutely should be recreation, so...
And, and that was my concern, is that we, we just, right now, it's...
It's been since 1901.
Exactly, and it's a, and it's a beautiful green space for the community.
Sure, yeah.
If we make it commercial, it may be, well, let's chisel off a corner here, and let's chisel off a corner there, and let's, let's put condos on the, on the beach side of it, and...
So it would...
It's an, it's an executive course and no view of the lake.
I know at one time they talked about selling the property on 12th Street, the driving range, or housing condos or whatever, but that, that plan went away.
So, that's, that's my, I just, I think we run into a danger if we change that big property base to something that could be developed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to develop that.
Especially, like I said, just take that whole waterfront and put, you know, rows of five, four-story condos, because they wouldn't have to add for special use for that.
So am I hearing that it's, it's been a golf course for a while, and, well, more than a while? And it will, it will likely...
And I would likely keep it.
Happy to change that to recreation.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was the only thing that I saw.
Sure, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
I have one quick question, but I want to check with something else. Where is Golden Acres?
I have, Pam, I've got one. Now, County is, Manistee is also putting out their master plan. Now, are we compatible with that?
Maybe that's the park and recreation plan? I don't, I'm not sure of what the county...
Because I hit Teresa before she left, because I mean, they've been heading it out, so everybody gets what it is, so, you know, to get it to the public.
She did not make me aware of that, so I don't know what kind of master plan it is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted, you know, so we're all working on the same page, is what I was concerned about.
And Acres is the old...
I don't know, okay.
And I mean, if, if it's the county recreation plan, or the county master plan, but the city's master plan says goes, I mean, the county can say what it wants about the city, but the city is in charge of the city, so, and the city, county should...
I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't know Golden Acres.
So...
But we'd kind of, you know, want to work together.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know what I'm saying?
I have not been brought into any of those kinds of knowledge or piece of information. If it's something that the city should look into or let me know about, I'd be happy to, you know, do that, I just, it's the first I've heard of it, so...
Where the one little park is?
I don't know, this is what I'm talking about.
I think that's over here.
Park, there's Mac Park right here. Now it's Golden Acres.
Got you. All right, never mind, I'm good. I did have one quick question.
Yes.
It talked about having two elementary schools, which two elementary schools was referring to?
Which, can you tell me what page you're on?
Uh, no.
Neighborhood information?
Probably, yeah.
So my sense is, is I had copied and pasted that from the last plan.
Okay.
Because that was a lot, it seemed like it was a lot of good information, so if one of the elementary schools was like the Catholic school, or if there's, if there's only one, then there's only one.
Well, there, there is two, there, we used to have three.
Okay.
And we just closed one, there's still, there is the Lutheran elementary school, and then the public one, and I just was wanting, wanted to make sure that, do I know, am I missing one?
Well, like Madison is still...
Madison's not a city.
Not city, that's outside.
It's considered violated.
Okay, so just to clear...
It's Lincoln School, it's now been, well, semi, or Jefferson, Jefferson is now vacated.
Yeah.
Lincoln is, is still a, is still a school.
Lincoln School.
But it's not an elementary school.
Lincoln is now Casman, but it's, but it's high school.
High school, okay.
I was just talking about the elementary schools, I just wanted...
So there are two elementary schools?
Yeah, one's private, one's...
Jefferson, and then the private, and then potentially the Catholic school may become one again.
Isn't that Trinity Lutheran, isn't that elementary?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, that, I was counting, Lutheran, and then the, the city school. I was just checking to see if there was another one, since Jefferson closed down.
So two things I will say, one, I'll double-check to see we're in this particular chapter, but you're also saying, is reminding me that in the demographics chapter, which is what we reviewed like almost a year ago, I'm not sure if that information has, you know, where that was in terms of closing and capturing the information. One great thing is, is that, as we've gone through these chapters, we will eventually, sooner than later now, compile all the draft chapters and put the whole plan in front of you all, so that way, if there have been things that have changed, because this plan has taken, it's just taken a little bit more time, this is a great, that would be a great time to kind of make sure that all those little changes that may have happened to be current or corrected, so, yeah.
That was, that was the only question I had, was how we were counting.
Okay.
I had, I had something, I'm Maxxel Towne now, and I didn't write it down at the time, so that information is lost.
Okay.
Until it comes back.
Sure, sure.
I just had never heard of Golden Acres before. That was my only question.
Well, here's, here's a question, where Reitz Park is developed, was that, that is city, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so is that considered Maxxel Towne?
I don't know exactly where the edges of Maxxel Towne start and stop. I'm not from here, so I don't know.
I, I, I don't know.
This was, I think the...
I think Reitz Park is considered Oak Hill.
Okay.
I think you might be right. I think, I've heard that before.
I think Oak Hill, that, that area...
On top.
Up on top. Reitz Park.
Yep.
Okay, Reitz Park.
So should Reitz Park...
There you go, that answered the question, so...
So should Reitz Park be renamed to Oak Hill, or keep it as it is?
I would keep it as it is.
Okay.
I think more people would recognize it that way.
Okay.
People may think that we've annexed Oak Hill. We don't need that.
Correct.
We do.
So I, I also, that just reminded me of the manufactured home residential. What's, what's the difference, what's the classification of manufactured, because we have homes on, just off of Water Street and River, Water Street, that basically, two of them were manufactured homes.
There's, there's a difference between manufactured and modular.
Modular, right, those were manufactured homes, and I'm just wondering, and, and actually, my guess is that little stretch there is where the public housing is.
So this was taken from the last plan, and the manufactured home, it is, it used to be called mobile homes, right? So that is the area, so the city is supposed to have something, you can't not have it. The particular, I don't know what the particular city's zoning ordinance definition is, that's another kind of way to dial into what exactly that is, but this is the area in the city where now the more appropriate term or definition is a manufactured home, as opposed to a mobile, mobile park, mobile home park, so that's, that is that...
And that's why I was wondering, because...
Yep, and again, that's where you take your zoning ordinance, so in the zoning plan in the, in this chapter, if you go to the manufactured home residential narrative section, it matches in the zoning plan what the particular zoning ordinance matchup is, so that way, moving forward, if you have other manufactured home developers wanting to come in, you can address that by looking at the master plan, looking at the zoning plan within the master plan that points to the zoning ordinance, to help you basically figure out how the city would answer that kind of request moving forward.
Okay. That's why I was concerned.
It limit, it limits, limits it severely, just by having it in that particular area, is, unless you want to add more.
Well, just like I said, the, you know, with, with construction costs, the way they have become, manufactured homes are becoming more and more, um, acceptable, and, because you can shave maybe fifty thousand dollars off the price of, of a, a three-bedroom home.
And you can put it on.
And they're permanent, they're not, they're not on wheels, what, you know, so again, it's, it would be how I consider to be a manufactured home versus a mobile home.
So zoning ordinance does define manufactured housing, community, and manufactured home? So that would go hand in hand with your question, I believe. As she said, you can't outlaw and discriminate against manufactured and mobile homes, but we have a width requirement?
Mm-hmm, okay, so there you go, so you identify it by width and size.
There you go.
Roof pitch is, uh, how they distinguish them too. Pitch of the roof, manufactured homes are certain, and built homes are another.
Not anymore.
No.
Was that?
They custom. You can get a manufactured home with a twelve, twelve pitch.
Oh, you can?
Yep.
Yeah. I suppose you can, I suppose you can.
They built the pitch after the.
They've come a long way, they have a three-twelve pitch, so. Uh, I have a question on the future land use map. On the Manistee Lakeside, um.
Page seven.
Page seven, thank you.
You're welcome.
So.
Uh-oh.
Don't worry, Roger, you can do it.
Am I fair enough?
This area right here, you have high-density residential?
Oh, by the railroad track?
Yeah, that, I think that's all.
By the peninsula, the peninsula, First Street?
That, it.
Down that way, yeah. It's like landfill.
Yeah, First, that is.
Um, no, River Street.
One side, is that, one side of Marina, is it?
Yeah.
Well, Sands Marina is in.
It's right in the corner.
Yeah, Sands is right here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
But there's no residential. On this side there is, on the lake.
Across.
Not here.
Oh, no, no, no.
So that's.
And there is all railroad.
That's, yeah.
So maybe, so that's the future.
That's the future.
In other words, they're saying.
Years, potentially, would you.
Okay, a place for condos.
It, again, this is, this is us sort of trying to look in the crystal ball, and you could tell, Tanya, no, this, this one is incorrect, and you guys can then wrestle with it, but again, just looking at, I mean, yes, is the railroad going to go away? Highly likelihood not, however, that has been going on in the debate for the community for a long time.
Yeah, that was.
So, just, you know, if all the things come into play at the right, you know, right storm, would, um, high-density residential make sense there? That's, that's, that's what that says, and if, again, you guys are like, no, you know, but stick it with mixed use, because mixed use could be a variety of things.
I, that would be my recommendation, is just have the whole, that whole piece mixed use, because it gives a little bit more flexibility, and it's an unknown, and, you know, you have restaurants across the street, you never know what's gonna happen there.
Looking at a factory right in that little piece of pie, you're looking at the backside.
Are you ever gonna open that restaurant across the street?
Eventually.
Eventually, yeah.
Before I turn eighty.
Yeah.
So.
Before I die.
Well, plus you've got the urge there to.
Two clarifying questions, then?
Good.
Um, I'm, I'm, I appreciate voc- vocality. Is everybody in agreement with that, like, changing it over to mixed use instead of high-density residential? I'm seeing, so, okay, that's shank, yes, okay.
Yes.
And then, so, can I approach the screen?
Absolutely, yes.
So I just, I wanna clarify, you guys are saying the whole thing, so right now, I don't, is it this whole thing, or like this whole thing you want?
No, just like.
Sliver, right there.
Sliver, right there.
That pale green.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there.
Oh, that one, just.
That section.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you for that clarity.
That's a alien nature, great road, isn't it?
And then also those other little small rectangular pieces at the bottom as well of that, by that parcel, or leave those high-density? You see how the railroad, I mean.
I'll point it again. So, you want these also mixed use, or should those?
Those.
Yeah, there's a part of there.
I don't know what's there.
Yeah, I would just say, keep it all mixed use.
Thanks.
At the corner of Hancock and First. This is where the Tabernacle's at.
And again, if everybody sleeps on it, in three months, they decide differently.
No.
This is not the final version of, of the document, so.
That's where the Tabernacle's at.
That's. Great.
There's a parking lot in the Tabernacle.
Yeah, right behind us.
Yeah, well, what you just mentioned, those three parcels, that's where the church is. There's a church here, right now.
Yeah.
Sure, a small part, uh, you know, one, one block of it is a church.
Yeah.
The other is that going down that hill.
Right.
And the railroad tracks go, then, then that's some nice lakefront property.
Yeah, that's.
But I don't, you know, don't necessarily think skyscrapers would be.
No, I, so mixed use.
Mixed use.
Mixed use is good.
Okay.
Yeah, lots of possibility.
Flexibility, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you got flexibility.
Look at how purple it is there, it changes colors.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I. Any other comments?
No.
Roger, you have anything?
Well, I'm just looking here under public, on page three, you have where Manistee Catholic Central School is located on the corner of US thirty-one and Twelfth Street, for preschool through twelfth grade. That's been closed.
Right.
So do we wanna eliminate that, or?
I, I.
I didn't.
Keep it as a school, because it's, it's, they're still working the plan for that to become a school again.
The land is, I would agree, the land is still used that way, as of today, the buildings are still there.
Yes.
And they haven't been knocked down.
No.
It's not, we're not here to say who's, you know, if the buildings are, are vacant or in, in, you know, in use, in the sense of, you know, are people occupying the building, but it still looks and acts like a school, everybody, you know, is treating it as such, so.
Okay.
Um, again, that's where, that's the existing land use, and that's where the future land use map, right now, we have it listed as general, is it general commercial? Or is it, no, sorry, we had it listed as civic, because I did not feel comfortable as a consultant telling a potential church that would look at this, that something else was gonna happen to their property.
Right.
Right.
I happen to be Catholic. I, I get like, you know, it's a whole thing, so, and it, you know, it could change, so.
And, and they're gonna probably have a decision within six months.
Okay, sure.
So it may be something that can be changed.
Within the timeframe before the plan gets adopted, yeah, if that, if that something comes to fruition, we can certainly make the adjustment, so.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah.
I don't see anything else.
No, I can't, except the, the role we have.
I will make.
Even, Tanya, on, on one, just a quick question.
Yes.
On the north side of the river, which, um, we have deemed, or it's deemed civic, it's owned by the sand company, even though it's private.
North side of the river.
North side of the river.
See one.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, that's not civic, that's called mixed use.
But it's, oh, oh, that's the mixed, of the, the mixed, okay.
Wrong color.
That's a, I might, I might go back and, and tweak, I might change the civic to a, a gray, so.
I mean, it would be nice to have a restaurant there, but.
Well, it's mixed use, so someday that could happen.
Yeah.
That could happen, or a golf course.
Another golf course, I, you know, if that's the way market goes.
Is that a par three?
What?
Par three course?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's just one big sand trap with a wooden.
That would be.
Really?
Yeah, the water trap.
Par three.
Water.
One hole.
Have the birds run off with your balls, that's what you do.
I don't know, I don't see a lot of holes here, Tanya.
Nope.
No.
So.
Great, I'll make those adjustments, um, in that way, so, um, next part is, I will be sub, um, sending Jerry and Tracy, I'm working on the implementation chapter, and that's more or less like the, the, the to-do list of the planning commission over the next, in the city, for the next five to ten years, um, but it's more or less capturing the, uh, things that have been kind of talked about or brought up over the course of the plans development so far. You guys would have an opportunity to review it, I wouldn't be at a meeting, and it, it's more or less, um, like, just sort of a read-through, you know, if you, if something's missing, or if something needs adjusted, um, I like to call it like a breadcrumb trail, so, three years from now, what, what was it that we were talking about? You know, you're supposed to go through the plan once a year, and, you know, keep on, keep on task with master plan, implementing it. Um, and then after that, um, we compile the, the draft plan and, and bring it forward to you all. I think, I have to double check, I think I have one more meeting that I would come up here, um, according to our scope right now, Jerry and Tracy and I are all talking about if that makes sense and leaves things as is, or because there's sort of a little bit of a, um, unique circumstance with the planning position, might I come back up here, et cetera? We're kind of working with that, so if you have any comments related to that, I would encourage you to talk with Jerry. But again, just know that I'm gonna continue to produce things, to provide to Jerry and Tracy, to keep this moving forward, um, because we still technically have a lot of time left to go in the plan, but you've done a lot of the work, so a lot of the work is done, but we still have a lot of process to do, like putting it out for public review, letting the neighboring communities know what's going on, um, putting it in front of you all again, and the, um, city commission for draft approval, eventually adoption, so.
Right.
That is all I have.
I, one more comment, if I could?
Absolutely.
Um, I see you have the train bridge annotated, but we don't have the other two. I would suggest that we annotate the bridge on Maple Street and US thirty-one, just so that somebody who isn't from.
Oh.
Knows that you don't have to swim across the.
Are you, so, um, yes, I see what you're saying, so thirty-one needs to be connected, it's just, yep, and then was there any?
And then Maple Street is the other one.
Maple Street's.
Hey, Jerry, am I right?
Yeah, yep.
Right.
It's very faint.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I didn't see where there was any.
Oh, I see, yeah, Maple Street is there.
Is it?
It's very, very faint, but yeah, it's there.
It's just not outlined in gray, well, I should say, I'm looking at the existing land use map, let me look at the future, well, is the future land use map, it's there, it just, the way that, uh, the computer program makes things, it just maybe, it looks faint.
Okay, all right, so.
Sure.
This one's hot, that one's.
I'll make sure all the maps, if that, if that's missing from all the maps, I'll